Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Spokane City Council Study Session. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Council Study Session for September 22nd. We have four items. We're going to hear from Numerica Credit on how to build credit, Credit Union on how to build credit. We're going to hear from Michelle Murray on the State Auditor's Office Update, and Jessica Stratton on the Capital Improvement Plan Updates for this year. And then we'll have an ARPA update on the Youth Behavioral Health Initiative from Council Members of Home. So Lars Gilbert, welcome. Looks like you have someone with you. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning, everybody. While I'm working on getting the PowerPoint set up here, I think most of you know me at least a little bit. My background has been, I've gotten to serve both with the University District previously, but before that, helping with economic development for small businesses and for individuals was a key part of my life. And that's kind of something that, as I've seen work that you've all been doing and looking at different opportunities, I realize that there's some past experience that I had that might be useful for you. And I'm here with my colleague, Sadiya Hummum.
Good morning. I'm a little short. I am in the retail side. I'm a branch manager for Regal. And I, over the years, I, my education, Eastern Washington for Social Services. But I've been in banking since I was 18 years old. So I offer a little bit more of the everyday boots-on-the-ground perspective. So I've worked all over town, North Side, Valley, South Hill. So I've got a little bit more of the insights and then consumer underwriting to kind of fill the gap on what we see in the credit side.
Want to make sure everybody can see this. So I'm going to go over a little bit of information, and like any good meeting, we've got an agenda. So what we aren't going to be talking about is the unbanked and underbanked. And normally, that would be something that I would want to talk to you about. But I'll show briefly why that's not my primary focus on. And what I did want to talk to you about is around credit, and how that's going to be impacting some of the policy decisions that you're making, and that could either undermine or support things that you're already working on and discussing. And then also, what's already happening and what are some additional things that we're exploring? So that if that's of interest to you, that we can continue to learn and share back with you all, so that you still have the most up-to-date information as you're evaluating solutions. So briefly, on that whole, what we're not talking about. In your packet, you had an opportunity, and I left mine in my car. In your pocket.
You weren't mine?
No, no, no. You're good. You're good. You've got some data around city of Spokane as well as the county. As you know, sometimes when you reach for data, you don't always get it at the granular level that you want at the city. But I've given you both what is available at the city for unbanked, underbanked, by gender, by race, by all these different things. A lot of different ways to slice and dice it, as well as for the county, which has a bit more, a little bit more detail, if not always as specific. What you can probably see as you compare them, though, is the city is a little bit, there's more affluent people in the county that kind of balance those numbers out. So if you look at their numbers and just make them a little bit worse sometimes, that's unfortunately kind of what you're navigating and wrestling through. When we look at unbanked, these are people that do not have a bank account, a checking account. That means that they're out cashing their paycheck. They're spending about $3,000 a year because they do not have access to these accounts. That's bad. What I start to get more concerned about, though, is there are people that have an account, but they still use a payday lender. They still use other things that have a significant cost to them and their families, and you can get caught in a spiral. And when you look, even though Spokane, both on unbanked and underbanked, is better off than a lot of the country, it's pretty significant, and it's not equally spread out around our community. So some of those things are driven by credit. So now focusing kind of on where we are. I was, we were talking about asking for a show of hands. I'm not going to put anybody on the spot right now, especially since we're broadcasting. But how many times has an unexpected expense come up, and you pull from another savings account, or you pull from the credit card to be able to make that work? Right. Thank you for your, yeah, thanks for participation. That happens to all of us. For families that do not have that extra savings, for families that don't have that credit card that can have that buffer, I have seen, I've worked with people, that that one flat tire led to them losing the job, led to them losing the car, led to them losing a house. And then they come up into our community in a different situation. Had they had a savings, had they had a credit, they would have been able to absorb that and move on with their life. And now their life has changed. And so those are some of the things that we're looking at. Because, again, about 40% of people don't have that savings buffer. And when we look at some of the credit access, that in lower-income communities, not a surprise. If you've got money, you've probably got credit. If you don't, oftentimes, there's a lack of access there. And it follows through on racial and ethnic background. Then when you look at Black and Hispanic members of our community, not only are about 15% blind, like they have no credit. When you look at subprime, we've had whole conversations around subprime lending and whatnot, double both of those numbers. And that's what you're looking at, people having no or bad credit, broken down by race. So when we're looking, this is not just an income question. This is also an equity issue. So when we're looking at some of these solutions, please feel free to apply them from both perspectives.
Hey Lars, quick question for you. Other than sort of the unscrupulous payday lending type stuff, are there microloans that are available for people that are in, like, tough spots that you're aware of within the banking community?
Within the banking community, not so much. And we will talk about some of the things, existing products that do exist. But in the end, if you don't have credit, if you don't have savings, it's difficult to access some of the existing things. And that's where we are keeping on pushing the line. And actually, I was having a call yesterday about how do we do that for small businesses as well? That how do you lend based on character and ability to repay, not just on some of these formalized systems? So just a couple of things, just briefly on, like, what's the cost? What's the consequence? And hopefully, these start coming together. But one thing, just as a reminder, while I'm coming to you because you're investing millions of dollars in our community to address real pressing issues, and I want you to be successful. Our community needs you to be successful. This is not just for people that are at risk, people that have fallen off the support network. And I ask for permission, but when we're looking at all the different ways that credit impacts your life, if you don't have credit, this is a lot of people that don't have access to it. And actually, Mark, thank you so much. We've been able to work with Mark to actually build his credit because these issues that we're looking at, and the costs I'm going to show on this slide here, this impacts, if you've got a decent job, you're working, you're helping support people. But if you don't have credit, your cost of living is higher. It's expensive to be broke. It's expensive to have bad credit. So what are we doing to help, and not just provide a safety net, but prevent people from needing it in the first place? So just briefly, if you're looking at an auto loan, if you have bad or no credit, significant cost for home loans. That data point, that was back when home loans were at 3%. It is now impossible. It is prohibitively expensive, if you have bad credit or no credit, to be able to get a home loan. It's just not feasible for you to be able to do that, and it keeps on going down. A couple of quick notes of current relevance. The Insurance Commissioner, for several, for quite a while, had said, "Insurance companies cannot use credit score to set pricing." So that was good for me. I've got good credit. My car insurance went down for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me do this again. When it was that way, my insurance went up a little bit, but it gave everybody kind of more of a fair chance, based on your driving record, not based on credit. That just got overturned. So for a working family that's struggling to pay for gas and get to their job and keep everything going, their insurance rates are going up if their credit is worse. So that is, credit is mattering more. When we look at employment, people trying to get a better job to provide for their families. Almost half of employers use credit to evaluate, and 1 in 10 unemployed individuals do not get a job because of credit issues. It is expensive to have it, and, we were talking before, if someone wants to sign up for utilities with the city or with others, if you have no credit, bad credit, you have to pay a deposit. Right now, the ordinance with the city is that it's up to two months of anticipated billing. So this is not just an other-person issue. We're trying to figure this out. I think you all are trying to figure some of these things out because it's expensive to be broke. It's expensive to have bad credit. So just briefly here, I want to make sure I'm handing this off correctly. These, we've been sharing some of the costs, sharing some of the problems, but there are some solutions. There's already things that we already are doing and want to share. But what we've found is that the barriers to access some of these solutions are higher than they need to be. We're exploring ways to lower the barriers so that people that are trying to start off right, that are trying to get a fresh start, trying to get a new start, that there's fewer barriers in their way to be successful. And I want to have Sadiya share a little bit of practically, what does this look like?
Yeah, so in the last probably seven years especially, I've spent some time teaching at SCC. We used to do Money Management International, someone we would contract with. And one thing that never amazes me is the amount of assumptions around credit building. So, or credit, the access of credit in general. So some of that comes from not having economic classes in high school, or sometimes if you can take college and not even, you know, hit anything like that anymore. So there's a lot of assumptions. There's a lot of tribal knowledge about what is true and isn't true. And unfortunately, we see that in all sorts of wakes of life. So that could be, you know, someone who makes $10,000 a month, which you can look at and be like, wow, they clearly have it figured out. I'm sure their credit's great. That's not true. We see personal loans for $10,000 a month to pay for their private chef. It's easy to look, you know, from a step back and be like, well, like, then cut that expense. But you are a byproduct of what you learn. And we see all day, every day, different stories, different things. Accessibility looks different to everyone, but I would say the biggest thing, over my experience at least, I'll share a couple of members that came in, probably in 2018. They needed a loan to pay for a funeral of a family member. And that was in itself, obviously, a tragedy. But they were trying to think of all the ways they could figure it out, cash out on a car, all the things. And their credit was just not that good. And when you, even if you have collateral, if you don't have good credit, the cost of that loan is obviously higher, the cost of fees, the cost of everything is just different. So fast forward, we did get them a loan. We had a very heavy conversation on how to properly get them on the right track and get them to their goals. And obviously, there was a lot of work between now and then. But now they are both small business owners in our community, very successful. They have a second home in Ocean Shore, as they go visit. So it's kind of crazy what education and accessibility could change for your situation. Of course, it's a two-way street, so you can give money all day, whether it's a secured credit card or whatever it is. But it has to be both parties. It has to be the education, the resource, and the individuals or members, in our case, that want to put forth to grow and be part of that. So I would say, not to digress too far here, the biggest thing that we can do right now is make sure the education and the support is there. So programs like SNAP are fantastic because they offer both things. And Numerica feels there is a way that we can continue to partner on that, and that's more what Lars can get into. But before I pass it off, does anyone have questions on the retail side?
Just, this is just Betsy personal. I didn't know it was a thing that I could borrow money from my personal chef. So I probably need to come in and talk to you about that. I know it's all relative, but I didn't know that was a thing.
We should have an offline conversation about the best use of your money, though. Yeah, yeah, yes.
So this is addressed to both of you. I used to work for Tin Can, which was, you remember Tin Can, I think, Lars, organization that helped teach computer literacy to underserved communities. And one of the things that we designed was a program for kids to learn about money. And it was a computer program, so of course, they wanted to get involved in it. And it was, they took to it immediately. It taught them that if you want all this stuff over here, you have to be making this much money. And it taught them how to allocate the resources, talked about credit, about banking, all of these sorts of things. And I would submit to you that, once you're out of high school, it's too late. That you need to get people in high school, and that has to be part of the curriculum, is how to manage money. There are kids coming out of high school, have no idea how to write a check. Everything is either mom's credit card, or cash, or it's on my phone, whatever. But they need to know how to manage money, that it's not just this nebulous thing that magically appears. So I would submit that that is something that you could offer, too.
We do, yeah. I'll let him speak about, he actually oversees that program. In the branches, we start at a young age. We actually have bank accounts starting, I mean, when they're born, as soon as they have a social, that their parents can manage. But also, when kids turn, well, I guess teenagers at that point, 13, we do, in branch, we offer those, we offer the education to the parents, we offer the education to the children. And we partner and teach them how to use a debit card and all that stuff, well before 18. So they're, so they are equipped.
Well, I'm suggesting there are parents that wouldn't know to do that. If they don't have a bank account, they're not going to go into a bank. So that's why the schools are a good way to.
And the good news, and we can share about, we've got an actually award-winning curriculum that we do in, it's called Starting Off Right. Because again, we're talking about how do we help people get back on track, or to help, that how many people can pay their rent, and that could be a mortgage. But because they don't have credit, they don't have it. So again, it's that combined, the earnings, the education, and the tool. So we do in-class education, and we're finding other ways to be able to get out there in the community with this, so.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on this as well, because one of the five best things I ever learned was how many worked, right? You know, once you understand how many works, it's not really difficult. It's just you have to understand how it works. And you teach at North Central. I went to Rogers. You know, we didn't get any education along this line growing up. And it wasn't until I got connected with an organization that helped me put it all together. I mean, when we talk about payday loans and credit debt early and those kinds of things, I mean, that's my story. And I wish that somebody would have told me, far before I was 18, when I started getting credit cards, hey, by the way, here's how the game works. Here are the rules. Here's how you play it. Here's how you do it well and set yourself up for success. And so when you talk about your curriculums in the high schools, are those like a one-day class? Or is it something that we're trying to get, like, actual, real, you know, significant curriculum into the schools to teach people about money?
A couple of different things. And so one thing that I'm happy to respond, one thing I did want to definitely.
Lars, can you get a little closer?
Sorry, turning to a clear space, sorry. A couple of things that, happy to discuss with financial education, because I spent over a decade of my life in this area of financial education and engagement. If you don't have access to the system, though, all the knowledge in the world doesn't do you any good. And so I definitely want to make sure that we can share a couple more things on that. For us, we have, it was a 12-part curriculum. That's a little bit much. And so what we've been focusing on are four critical things that help equip people. But we, it really depends on the teacher. You may be aware, this last cycle, the state law did change and did require, but it's an unfunded mandate, to provide financial education. There is some funding that's going through the different ESDs across the state. We're supporting that. We're trying to get as many in as we can. We have over 20 members of our teaching committee putting in hundreds and hundreds of hours across multiple schools, and it's never enough. And so part of what we're trying to do even, is with some of the accounts, is how do we work with the parents and the kids, both? Because if we can help the parents with things that meet their lives' needs and stabilize them, and give them ways to be able to communicate with their students, it's happening. Actually, like, when we were doing this at Logan Block Party, so it's not just in the school, at Logan Block Party, people bring out their kids. They're hanging out there. And so we are engaging them with a question and answer, and getting them to start thinking and talking about money, because it's a taboo topic oftentimes. Yeah. So we're going to definitely get some questions, but I do want to just briefly share a few more things, if it's possible. The, because it goes to your point, like, but for any one of these things, there are gaps. And again, getting our kids to start off right, happy to have that conversation. I think there's, there are things that you, that you can do to support that. And for a lot of families, as you're investing to address homelessness, as you're addressing a variety of issues, it's beyond that. And so this is where I'm coming to you to say, hey, there's things that, as you are doing policy right now, if you consider a few other things, I think that you can impact more people more sustainably, more efficiently. For us, it comes with financial education, secured credit card. What we've done with SNAP, in part, is something that we can scale. But there's a lot of different ways that we and other financial institutions can help with that. But it's education, it's accessing the actual tool itself, it's the ongoing support, and it's limiting the barriers. A big thing for us has been, if you do not have $300 for a secured credit card, it's not going to happen. So you can have the education, you can have all these other things, you're not going to do it. We're finding a way to fill in the gap. For you all, if you had a revolving fund, that is a way to be able to help people build credit while they're getting to other services that you're already funding. And when they're successful, it comes back to the account to serve the next person. So just briefly, last thing here, why I'm bringing it up, financial education for youth, happy to discuss that. This intervention right now with things that you're already doing, we can talk about how this is helping families. We talk with both, with educators. Zach, like, how many kids are changing schools constantly because they can't stay in the same home? If we get kids, families housed, but we can't stabilize them, it impacts education, it impacts, they're going to miss the financial education in the school because they're changing schools. So all these other things, it impacts the family if we can't provide them access and stability. Social service, as you find nonprofit partners to fund and to do this work, if they're spending all their efforts to stabilize one family, they can't help them move out to help the next family move in. If these help families to move on and free up space for next people, it increases outcomes for the nonprofits, and of course, for our community as well. Happy to share more of those things. But in the end, we're working to, oftentimes, we look at, how do we close the front door of people coming into the challenge and open the back door? Educating our youth, preventing some of these things are actively things that we're working on. We are chewing gum and walking at the same time on these things. And for this one, this was for you all, that if you aren't considering the credit needs of the people that you're serving, you might be stabilizing them, but they won't be able to move on with their life to market rate housing and other things like that.
Lars, you mentioned, you mentioned, you know, the city had some sort of a revolving fund. And I know one idea that I've pushed for has been a revolving loan fund around mortgages, down payments, or mortgage assistance, or whatever it might be, in particular during the height of the pandemic. But I think there's a need regardless. Do you think there's an opportunity for the city to partner with somebody like Numerica to kind of operate a program like that, perhaps on the banking side, and maybe, you know, help with the funding of the revolving loan fund from the city side? Could a partnership like that work and get, but get the dollars to the people who are, you know, truly, you know, in need of accessing those sorts of loan funds?
Absolutely. And I would say, like, there's a lot of different ways, three. So I've done multiple of these myself, like, transportation loans. When you look at that, if you don't have a reliable vehicle or a transit line to be able to get to a job, you can get the job, you just can't keep it. When we look at wealth creation, a homeownership opportunity is critical. But also, when I look at, for car insurance, I save $212 a year, this is not a Geico commercial, but I save $212 a year because I can afford to pay my insurance in six-month increments. If a family had access to credit, they can lower their cost of living. They're going to get cheaper car insurance. They could self-finance, paying that $600. They can save money. So when we're looking at a revolving fund to build consumers' credits, and just residents in the city, for wealth accumulation through homeownership, absolutely, for transportation, for small business, there's a lot of ways that you can help families to build the credit, to access the systems that allow them to be out and successful on their own. So absolutely.
One more. So, you know, like, there's a, you know, the website, like Credit Karma, right? And they provide a lot of tools, a lot of information. But what I'm wondering is, because you're talking about how folks can save money through just kind of out-of-the-box thinking, really, you know, paying your insurance at a different interval than maybe, you know, others do. And frankly, there's probably a lot of things I could save money on if I really thought it through. Is there a program that Numerica runs, or anybody in the banking industry runs, that would sit down with somebody, kind of go through all of their bills, look at those things and say, well, if you did this different, this different, this different, you're saving $1,000 a year?
Absolutely. Yeah, we do that one-on-one. We're also having an on-demand, because we'll be launching it here in about a month, so that people even off-hours, anytime, different languages, that they are able to ask a question. Because sometimes, you don't want to, you don't want to talk to your parents. You don't want to talk to us.
And you don't know what you don't know.
Exactly. And so there's, there's ways to be able to help that way. Also, something that I would offer, how many of you have referred someone to a restaurant that you like? You know, all the time, right? You enjoy something. We share about it. Finances are a little bit weird. And so this is about, how do we iteratively, it's a little bit at a time. So for us, it's, we can find some of those cost savings, but it's an ongoing conversation. How do we find ways to take some of the shame away? How do we help people access this? Part of why we're focusing on credit rather than underbanked, people are not motivated necessarily by banked, underbanked. But consistently, people understand that their credit score matters. It's kind of an interesting, engaging thing. And people will show up, they want to learn. And so this is, where is their motivation? People want to know about this. They want to access it. And so they learn a little bit. They learn a little bit more. They see that what they did impacted their credit score. They see that they saved money. What else? What's next? And so that iterative layering of learning is what we've found to be most powerful, not just everything all at once.
So I would also say, not everybody has computer connectivity. And going out to functions like the Logan, what was it?
Block Party.
Block Party, yeah.
Is really important, because those, they're. Is really important because those, they're, they don't feel as threatened if they come up to you because you're just sitting there. But to not have the connectivity, if they don't have a computer at home, that's a barrier too. And I know right now at Camp Hope where people don't have ID. So it starts at that basic level, you don't have ID. And so all along, there are places where people can fall through their cracks.
Yeah. Well, and what I would, one of the things I would offer that this is not a, like a new thing that we're trying to do for the broader community. Part of my background is there are nonprofits that are wrapping around their services, but often it's but for the ID, but for one kind of solvable issue, the, the family, the person is not moving on. We do domestic violence support. The oftentimes someone will be trapped in a situation because they can't, they don't have $5,000 for a parenting plan or for security to be able to get to a safe situation to protect their kids. And so we actually offer domestic violence loan to be able to help people out. But we only offer it in partnership with groups like YWCA that have that wraparound service. This is something also that we would encourage you, this is not just a willy nilly throw money out there or provide a loan loss reserve and do it to anybody. Who is helping, VOA, when we're looking with SNAP, other people, they're providing a wraparound service that but for this last piece, they're not able to get out on their own, they're not able to build the credit. So it's, it's a last dollar or it's a keystone thing, it's not just a standalone product. And that wraparound services helps for greater success and then create space for another person to come in to be successful.
I was just going to ask you, you mentioned our utilities as one solution. Are there any other policy ideas that you guys have kind of muddled over that we should be thinking about before you leave, so?
So, and I think I made a promise, I wasn't making policy recommendations and I, so, so, I'm going to take my name down.
Potential changes to improve.
So Lars Gilbert is a private citizen, but I would say, so the, the insurance commissioner recognized that when insurance rates are calculated using credit score, your on time mortgage payment improves your credit. Your on time rent does not. So you can have the same behaviors and have very different credit scores. You can have the same driving record and have different insurance rates. So that is something that he had made an administrative decision on that has been overruled. As you're developing your policy agenda for the state, that may be a great thing to evaluate to see is if there's a legislative solution for that administrative fix that failed.
Lars, in your mind, with just real quick to follow up with that thread, is there an unintended consequence of using rent in that way? Because if your, your success is going to help your credit, then also wouldn't it, if you're late or anything like that, also be a detriment to your credit? So could, could there not be sort of two, you know, double edged sword there?
Potentially, and happy to talk more about this. What I would say is the credit bureaus, there's three private organizations. They are for profit, private organizations, and they are the ones that control how credit scores are used. And so they have incentives to create things in a certain way. They are inherently not designed to be fair or equitable or create opportunity. So I'd say they've actually recognized that they do need to correct things and they are finding ways to be able to report rent and other things. But when you're a, how many of our rentals are from mom and pop renters? And so them setting it up with the credit bureau to report it just doesn't make sense. So I think there's a lot of things like that, like your on time payment of a lot of bills. It right now, if you pay your medical bills, you pay your utility, you pay your cell phone, you don't get any credit. You stop paying it, you get dinged. So I think right now what we see is there's already a perverse incentive built into the system. While we can't fix the system, but we can for certain things say, hey, we know it's not working. So let's not use that to set these other rates and hurt people to make it even more expensive to have no credit, poor credit. There's, how many people are coming to our community that are Ukrainian, African, that have resettled into our community? They, they don't have anything. It is harder for them to start and to integrate into our community if we're using credit as the way to say, how expensive should your life be?
I don't know if this could be a funding source of some kind, but talking to George Dahl, you know, they actually, because of the revenue that they're getting off of those, you know, loans that we give out to people to update their homes, they actually have a hard time with their rating with the, with the higher level governments because they have so much revenue coming in and not enough money going out. So maybe that's a funding source for us to be able to, to, you know, reappropriate or put into a program like this, something like that.
And then I was just going to point out, I don't know if you've connected with Spokane Schools particularly, this year they're rolling out a different advisory schedule, three days a week for students, which is kind of like a traditional homeroom. But there's curriculum attached to it and they said financial literacy is supposed to be part of that. We don't know what it looks like yet as teachers, but that might be an opportunity to connect if you haven't yet with them.
Absolutely. Thank you. And one of the things we want to do with some of that is no one, none of us, we will not give loans or product to someone if it's going to hurt them. A teacher, a family person, like, we all want to help, but we'd never want to hurt. And so for how many teachers, because they don't know, they'll be afraid to answer questions or afraid to follow up. And so part of like the, when I mentioned about that number or the website that people can call, that, that they have a trusted advisor that they can call, like, I don't know, but here's a resource. How many people don't know about 211 that, you know, if it's credit building, if it's, you know, after school tutoring or whatnot, that there's resources? How many people don't know about the resources available? So we want to use that to help them feel more comfortable and sharing and helping. Thank you. Very good. So again, this is, was less a specific pitch, but just as, as you're looking at these things, I want you to be successful. I want those dollars to be able to go as far as possible. And I think there's some things that we can do and others can do to support you in your mission. Cause our mission is to enhance lives, fulfill dreams and build communities. I think that we share that same thing. And there's a lot of tools in our toolbox that I think can support you as you do that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lars.
Thanks so much.
Thanks so much. All right, Michelle Murray.
Good afternoon, thank you. I just want to present the state auditor's office for our results of our fiscal year 2021 financial statement audit and single audit for the city of Spokane. This is Alicia Shaw, Tara Alfano and Angeles, and Angeles Diaz. Thank you so much for your time this late morning. We really appreciate the opportunity to actually meet with you in person. It's been a couple of years since we've been here in person for a, a meeting. Today, we actually are going to be presenting a PowerPoint presentation up here, but we are providing an exit packet to you that includes the draft copies of our audit reports, including the agenda as well for today's meeting. And then both of it, or all three of us will present a portion of this presentation. So the, we won't speak directly from the packet, but we will point out page numbers where you can find additional information as we're going through our presentation. And this audit, this audit exit conference is for, as Michelle said, the financial statement and federal grant compliance audit for 2021. On the next slide.
You should be able to pull that mouse over and then you can just scroll, scroll down. It will reach, it will reach over, yeah.
This is so techie. Okay. So I can just scroll. Oh, there we go. Look at that. Thank you. A little bit about the state auditor's office. As you know, Pat McCarthy is the Washington State Auditor and she represents the Washington State Auditor's Office. She is an independently elected official with the state of Washington and we are independent auditors. And what that means is we are not part of the management's process, the day to day process. We don't make management decisions, we don't make policy decisions. We audit the, to the policies of the city and any other laws or regulations that you're required to follow. And then we provide those results to the city and then publish the results on our website, which makes the information available to your public and allows the city to be more transparent with your citizens as well about the operations of the, of the city. During the course of the audit, if we, if we do find any exceptions or deficiencies in the processes or noncompliance with regulations or laws, we'll bring those to your attention in the form of recommendations. And then if there are things that are going really well, we'll point those out, out as well, which helps the city improve its efficiency and effectiveness. So I'm actually going to transition over to Angeles.
Hi, everyone. So for the city, we did perform a federal grant or a single audit for the city for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. And we are happy to share with you that we are issuing an unmodified or clean opinion over the compliance of the city's federal requirements. This gives assurance that any federal funds that we reviewed were used for the intended purposes according to federal grant requirements. Our audits are conducted in accordance with government auditing standards and the uniform guidance. These standards do require that we gain an understanding of our internal controls and procedures that the city of procedures set on following requirements for our federal program requirements. If we were, as Alicia mentioned, if we were to find any issues or concerns or weaknesses that could lead result, lead or result in any significant noncompliance, we would be required to share with those, with you. And we are happy to share that there are no significant reports to communicate today. For my review of our internal controls and compliance over the major programs, we reported no significant deficiencies in internal controls. We identified no deficiencies that would be considered material weaknesses. And we also identified no instances of noncompliance that would be required to be reported. In conducting our federal audit, we are required to select sufficient coverage that meets federal coverage for requirements. For the city, the coverage requirement was 20% for 2021, as the city does qualify as a low risk audit. And in our procedures, we selected the programs that we have listed here for review, which include the emergency rental assistance program, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, the hybrid planning and construction program, and the disaster grants public assistance program. Three of the four programs selected for review for the year were COVID related as they were considered high risk. Altogether, the programs reviewed for the city contribute to approximately 63% of the federal expenditures. And as we, as I previously stated, we determined the city materially complied with requirements or receiving federal funding. Are there any questions over the results of the federal audit? I'll give the presentation on to Tara. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll be going over your financial statement audits and then doing some wrap up. So the next slide here, we have your financial audit results. So same audit scope, we covered fiscal year 21 for the financial statement audit. Again, we're pleased to report an unmodified or clean audit opinion. You can also see in your packets that the results for our financial audit start on page eight, but we're also going to fully summarize them here. So just for future reference. And then we also want to point out that that clean audit opinion is what you're looking for. So this provides assurance that the financial statements are stated fairly and are materially correct. And we also want to point out that our audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. So similar to single audit, that requires us to look at internal controls over financial reporting. And again, we're happy to report that we found no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses and no concerns with internal controls and also no noncompliance. And then this next slide, part of our audit requirements were required to communicate if there were any uncorrected misstatements, but we did not have any uncorrected misstatements for the audit for 21. We did identify some misstatements that are going to be reported in a management letter, which we'll go through on the next slide. As a reminder, our management letters are mid level of reporting for audit issues. And they communicate, communicate control deficiencies that have a less than material effect on the financial statements as a whole. So this next slide, you'll see we actually brought in a copy of the full management letter, but it's also in your packet on pages 18 and 19. And you'll see that second page, page 19 is kind of where the, most of the important information is for the management letter. So I'll just go over the two bulleted items and then the recommendations in the management letter. So we did find two classification errors in the, or in the financial statements as bulleted on page 19. The first was related to federal grant revenue, which was misclassified on the statement of activities as charges for services that should have been under operating grants and contributions. So we do want to point out that this misclassification had no effect, no net effect on the statement and it was fully corrected. And then the second error we had was related to the revenue stabilization fund in, within the general fund. And this was a misclassification fund balance error. So basically it was classified as committed, but the, the revenue stabilization fund doesn't fully meet GASB 54 requirements to be considered a committed fund balance. Again, this had no net effect on the ending fund balance for that statement and it was fully corrected. And then you'll see, we also include the recommendations at the bottom of page 19 and up here on the slide. So our recommendations are to follow the established procedures for preparation and review of the financial statements, including a detailed review of classification amounts, of the amounts reported. And then also to update the SMC, which establishes that revenue stabilization fund to make sure it fully meets that GASB 54 requirement so that it can stay as committed. Can I answer any questions on the management letter? One thing I do also want to point out is that our management letters are referenced in our final audit report, but this full language is not included in the audit report. Okay. So next slide goes over a few more financial audit results. So these three areas you'll see on the slide were areas that we looked at for specific risk. The top one is management override of control. So this is something we actually look at in all of our financial audits that we do. We come in and we review financial transactions, how they're recorded and processed and approved, making sure that they're properly supported and that they're properly approved. And then the second piece down, financial statement preparation. Again, this is a more specific risk for the city, just because it is such a complex and large set of financial statements. So we do a detailed review of the preparation process for the statements and then also a detailed review of all the statements themselves. And then the last item you'll, you'll see is the capital asset system conversion. So we did some work on this area because the city's capital asset system was switched over and effective for 2021 financial reporting. So the work we did for that just looked at the conversion to sure, to ensure that it was complete and that everything was accurately transferred from one system to the other. Answer any questions on any of those items? Okay. So work of other auditors, so this is something pretty much we do every year where we look at the financial statement audit that was performed by Moss Adams of the Spokane Employees Retirement System. So we're able to rely on the work done by Moss Adams for that specific fund. And we're happy to report, we didn't find any concerns when we went and did our CPA review for that work. We had no limitations, no restrictions, and we noted no, no concerns with their review. So similar to prior years for that one. And then, okay, so closing remarks. So we're happy to present, our audit costs are actually going to be less than our original estimate. We originally estimated $253,000, but because the city provided timely access to staff and got us all our documents, we actually were able to use fewer hours. So our actual audit cost will be about $20,000 less than that estimate. And then our next audit, we do have your accountability audit for 2021 that will be starting next month in October 2022. And we've also provided an estimate for that next audit in your exit packet. And then our report publication. So our audit reports are published to our website. This audit report for the financial single will be published by the end of the month, which is your deadline for the single audit. So we'll get that after the exit today, we'll be able to go and hit publish on that report. We also provide a link here if anyone's interested in getting notified for other audit reports as they get published to our website. And then audit survey, so once we've gone through and closed out the audit, our audit surveys go out to council members and some staff that we worked with throughout the audit. So we really do value any feedback you can give us through those audit surveys. Any questions on the report publications? Yes.
Well, I have a, a specific question about one of the, the comments in here. Is this, is this a good time to ask that?
What's that?
Well, so it says, the city incorrectly classified revenue stabilization fund balance in the general fund, which resulted in overstating committed fund balance and understating unassigned fund balance by 7.3 million. There had no net effect on the ending fund balance. But what I'm wondering is, so we had 7.3 million identified as stabilization funds, but it sounds like. but it sounds like those were in the general fund. So were we, so does that mean that our perception of the amount of dollars in the general fund was 7.3 million higher than it should have been?
No, so it actually, it all stays within the general fund. This is more just your fund balance at the bottom of the statement. It was moving that classification showing that 7 million was as committed funds, and we had to have it moved to be unassigned funds.
Okay.
So it's still, it's all still within the general fund. It was basically just moving it down within that fund balance.
Okay.
So it would have been, the example of committed was, we've agreed to purchase this property, this money is for that. And they thought, just because it was a restricted reserve fund, that made it committed? And it wasn't committed, it was just restricted?
Yes. And GASB, the GASB we referenced in here has very specific requirements for a revenue stabilization fund. So that's kind of where our recommendation is focused more on that. If you'd like to keep it as committed, it just needs a little bit more into that SMC to meet those requirements, so. All right. So next slide, we just wanted to say thank you to a few people. So definitely Michelle Murray, who is our audit liaison for both the single audit and the financial statement audit. So a lot of time and effort from her to get us through the audit, so wanted to say thank you for that. And then we also had a few staff that we worked with throughout the audit, who kind of had to do some extra effort for us to get us through. So this year, we did have a lot of extra payroll requests for our single audits. So we wanted to thank the payroll staff for all their time and effort getting those documents to us. And then we also wanted to thank Lauren Berry, who helped us work through the capital asset system conversion with Michelle as well. And then in the grants management department, we worked with Skylar and Devin, who had to spend quite a bit of time with us working through the emergency rental assistance single audit, just because it's a new program, it's one of the higher-risk ones because it's COVID-funded. So we just wanted to make sure we pass out those appreciations to the staff, who really did put a lot of time and effort into the audit for us. And then our last slide is just any other questions we can answer, any, anything we missed, or anything? No? Okay. Well, again, great audit result. Thank you for your time in letting us present those results, and that's it for us.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah.
As always. All right, Jessica Stratton is going to talk to us about capital improvement plan.
All right, good morning.
That's still going to share the old one, so I can go ahead and take care of it up here.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is it this one?
All right, so yes, as a reminder, I'm Jessica Stratton. I'm the interim Director of Management and Budget. And today I'll be presenting the six-year citywide capital improvement program draft, which is a mouthful. So everyone knows that the City of Spokane puts together an annual budget, but maybe what some don't realize is that that annual budget is actually a compilation of two budgets, the capital budget, which we'll be talking about today, and then the operating budget, each with their own process and timeline. So the capital budgeting process is a six-year plan, as opposed to the operating's one year. It's updated every year during budget development. It allows us to prioritize capital projects or items, make sure that there's an alignment with the comprehensive plan. It allows us to evaluate funding status and sources of every project and item in there, of which right now there are approximately 500 in the CIP. And it allows us to plan for capital needs for those projects or items that are currently unfunded. And it, of course, is included in the SMC. So the timeline for the capital budget was, we began in April 25th. In the CIP, what that means is the CIP is opened via Questica to all users, to all department heads, project experts. Approximately, there are 100 employees that collaborate on the CIP. April 25th was admittedly late, about a month later than we normally do it, and that's because of the Questica implementation just took us a little bit longer to work out the bugs. On June 12th, the CIP was closed. Again, that means just closed to general updates by departments and project experts. But of course, the Budget Office centrally, from then on, handled all of the updates, adjustments, changes. At the beginning of July, the Capital Review Committee met to review all of the new projects, which was approximately 70. And then July through August, Budget Office held several kind of one-off meetings, mostly with department staff who had unfunded projects, discussing what their true needs and what their true priorities were, seeing if we could find funding, seeing what we could defer and why, really trying to figure out that allowing for planning of unfunded projects, that part of the process. Then on September 6th, the draft CIP was released to the public via posting on the City of Spokane website. And then just last week, the Plan Commission held the annual consistency review, which is required by SMC 717-10B. Councilmember Kinnear just so happened to be lucky enough to go through that hour-and-a-half meeting, where all 71 new projects were presented to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission will hold a public hearing on October 12th, and then after that, they will issue a findings of fact and recommendation for the council. And the CIP timeline will then be incorporated into council's regular timeline for a budget, which will include your own hearing and potentially, hopefully, usually, an adoption of the CIP in around November. So getting back to what is the difference between these two budgets? The CIP, in order to be a part of it, a project or item needs to be tangible, we need to see it, touch it, must have a useful life of at least five years, costs more than $60,000 or more, and be either found in Chapter 4, which is transportation, or Chapter 5, which is capital facilities and utilities of the comprehensive plan, or simply meet its goals. To be clear, this is the capital budgeting definition, this is not capital accounting definition, although they are similar, they are not the same. Okay, so all rules apply to CIP, as it does to operating budget. Funding sources are always going to be current revenues, reserves, or otherwise called fund balance, grants, donations, debt. So that is where funding comes from. Unique to the CIP is the funding status, the difference between funded and unfunded, like we've been talking about. So unfunded capital is allowed in the CIP for planning purposes, right? But it is not allowed in the very next budget year. So if a project or item is not funded, it will not appear in the '23 budget. So I created this table to attempt to categorize funding sources for discussion purposes. Here you can see that most of capital projects are funded with fund balance, that is the top one there, and that's predominantly from public works funds, because public works does make up 2/3 of the CIP. I would say the top, what, five rows there are predominantly public works-related. And I will say that I made sure to delineate REIT or Real Estate Excise Tax. I know that there's interest in these funds, and also, we are required to list all projects that are REIT-funded by RCW in our CIP budget book. So when you open our CIP budget book, you will see all of the projects that are funded by REIT. REIT is used and budgeted through the CIP almost exclusively. And so you will see that the current fund balance, which I believe Matt Boston has been saying is about 14.2 million, which is correct, is basically completely programmed for next year's spend in the CIP.
So it's programmed and spent in utilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Predominantly streets. For REIT II, it is all streets. For REIT I, it can be a mix of streets and general-funded facilities. So this, this is, this is a very small slide, I apologize for that. It's very hard to list. These are all of the new projects. So these are all the projects that were presented to Plan Commission last week. There are 71. This does exclude street capital, because it gets even more complex. Within the capital budget, there's actually two capital budgets, one for streets, because they follow the Washington State fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30. So council has technically already seen and approved that. So even though they are included in the citywide CIP, we do take them out for Plan Commission review, because they've already been through Plan Commission review. So these are the 71 projects that have been added. You can see their department and project name here. Yes?
So a couple of questions. On the street fire facilities, at the end of each of those, it says 2028. Is that indicating the year we need to buy those? Or is that a different code?
No, that is, that's when they're going to add it. So again, the CIP is a six-year plan.
Yeah, but I guess I'm wondering why, that's the only one where I see a year. Do we have years for all these others that are planned out, and they're just not on this list?
Yes. So when you actually go into the CIP budget book, you will see a table for all six years, and you'll see the spend.
And then the first section there, facilities, it's, it has Police Evidence Building, and I'm wondering why that's not under police facilities? So that's one question. And then another, Gardner remodel, my understanding is, we're going to sell Gardner, so why are we remodeling it? Obviously, I'm not going to support the Municipal Justice Center, but that's on here. The, where was the other one that I was going to ask you about? Oh, the Clean Fuel Infrastructure, is that specifically related to SPD, or is that citywide? Do you know?
So hopefully, I can remember all these. So Police Evidence Building, facilities does take on, it's under their purview to take care of their facilities, and it's all general fund. So Gardner remodel, that's, that's a good question. I will say that I believe that is in year 2024, so we do have wiggle room there for whatever happens there. And if I remember, the Clean Fuel Infrastructure, that is citywide.
Okay. And so do we know which departments are getting what, how much? I mean, do we have, is there a document or something that can be shared?
I don't think that's sussed out right now. I could be wrong, that would be a Rick Giddings question.
Okay. And then last question, where's the escalator that we're removing?
Intermodal.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yep.
So didn't I hear you say, if it's not funded, it drops off next year? Did you say that?
No, I said, if it's not funded, we, it does not go into the 2023 budget.
If it's not already in the plan, right now, even before this one? Like, if we add it to this plan, it's not going to be funded in 2023? That's what I thought you said.
Oh, no. No, yeah, if there's, so it's only in draft form right now, the CIP, so if things need to be added, they can be at this point. It's just, yeah, like with all CIP projects, there's eight criteria that need to be figured out to be added to the plan, one of which is funding. So if it's not funded, it will, it doesn't go automatically into the 2023 budget, but it can be in the CIP for 2024 through 2028 for planning purposes.
Without funding?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
I think I'm more impressed that 71 projects were reviewed and presented in 90 minutes. That's what I'm more impressed by. Yeah.
Well, it was a very quick 90 minutes.
Yes.
I have a specific question too, and I haven't digested this, but is there a new fire station on the West Plains, since we're losing our lease? Is that on here? Or is that somewhere in the plan? And how is that being funded?
Yeah, so that is in the plan, I want to say '24, '25, and it's currently unfunded.
Okay. That's the airport?
Yeah. So this is a snip directly from the CIP budget book. This is just a summarization of all of the capital spend over the six years within the departments. And the pie chart does really emphasize that 2/3 of this is public works.
And I see that those are the ones that are like 100% funded. Is that because they're getting that from their, their own revenue that they're generating? Is that how they're fully funded?
Correct. So it's their utility rates. Okay, so last slide, this is very small again, but this is the URL where you can find the CIP draft. I believe it's also in the briefing paper. It goes out here to this website, in the far right, there's the related documents. And in case you are interested, right below that is also the street CIP. So I will say that this is a CIP draft, we can continue to make changes. Public comment, so the SEPA has been filed, and it's in its public comment period. So if there's any environmental concerns, the public can reach us through there. Plan Commission, of course, has its public hearing on October 12th, so we can hear from the public there as well. They can, anyone can contact the Budget Office at any time to give us comments, and of course, council will also be having its own capital hearing eventually.
I have a comment on process. One, great presentation, by the way. Thank you. We had this frustration with streets a couple years ago, and I think we got it corrected for this year, is we would really like to have our work on this before it goes to Planning Commission. Because right now, we are in the dilemma of, if we make changes, it won't be included in the SEPA, it won't be included in the Planning Commission process. And so what we hear back is like, oh, well, you can't make a change now, because it's gone. So really, I'm not, and I know we were late a month this year, so, but next year, what I would love to see is that once, well, two things. One, it seems like there should be one or more council members on your capital review project. We should be on it at that point and getting our finger, not all of us, but whoever we assign to it, should be there, so we could give input and then flag critical ones that might, people might have an interest in. So we have some input at that, and then have at least an initial hearing with council before the final version is ready to go to the Planning Commission. So that, that's my request for next year, because otherwise, it just, it doesn't work very well the way it's supposed to do.
Sure.
So you're saying, you're saying that it's really too late for council to make changes now, but I understand this is draft.
It, it's not too late to do it, it's just that it's problematic, because the Planning Commission won't get to see whatever change that we make.
Well, the plant, we have representation on the Plan Commission, so we can...
But if we add a project, I'm saying, the Plan Commission won't get to weigh in again on it if we make it after their hearing.
Technically, they should.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have to.
But that's the problem, because we, we're going to be on our schedule to pass it. So if, when we want, that, that's what I want to cure, is that we have our input before it goes to Planning Commission.
But we're, we're not voting till November, right? So it seems like...
The Plan Commission, though, is, the hearing is October 12th?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's coming up, and so we would have to make changes pretty darn quickly.
Could we ask them to just push the hearing back two weeks to their next meeting? I mean, if there is something to add or discuss.
Let's, let's see if there's something to add, and see if we can do that.
Yeah, I just want to cure that structurally, so we're not having that conversation.
I agree. I agree. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what you were saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But your presentation was great.
Yes. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it was very clear. I wish you'd been here a few years earlier.
Jessica, one last question. The, the items that are here for parks, did the, the Parks Board approve those to put into the, the CIP? Is that how they got here?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we'll excuse you, Jessica. Councilmember Zepone is going to give us an update on the brainstorming around youth behavioral, ARPA allocation criteria.
Yeah. This is, coming back to council, we've had work group get-together with administration and council. This was the old version, tranche two, so it's been in the works for a long time, of the structure of the work group. And we conducted an outreach that included local providers for youth behavioral health, community groups, and Spokane Public Schools. Some of the things that we identified as needs in the community were around things being culturally specific, and peer mentoring and support was a high... things being culturally specific and, and peer mentoring and support was a high need for that. Need for building providers and a pipeline for that, but that's really a workforce development issue. And also a need for gap funding. And so from this, we came up with a recommendation of four buckets of categories. I think I've talked to most of you about it, but really an opportunity for us as a council to decide which direction to put the work group as we're going to shape the RFP and the buckets. I think the overall question that we have to ask ourselves is do we want to be focusing on providing services or capital? And we kind of have it broken down by both, but we can change that still. The, I was going to reread the tranche description for everyone because it's probably not top of your mind. But this is originally what it had and we can adjust it and go from there. But this proposal supports culturally appropriate behavioral health services and other interventions for at-risk youth in the city between 2022 and 2024. I think that's supposed to be it until 2026 when we can spin down. This is a broad idea and it can be used not only for behavioral health services, but also include general after-school programs. Specific program proposals would be evaluated during RFP process. Proposals would be rated based on demonstrated unmet need target clientele, demonstrated history of serving at-risk youth, demonstrated history of serving members of historically marginalized communities, fiscal responsibility and demonstrated and planned partnerships. It's kind of the, the criteria. The four buckets, I'll do.
What's the amount? Sorry?
Of $3 million.
Okay.
Yeah. So $3 million. So the four buckets, and then I can go in detail with each. But one bucket would be capital projects and that'd be the biggest for 1.7 million. Another 300,000 for school-based health clinic partnership with Spokane Public Schools. And then that would be on the capital side. On the services side, it'd be 400,000 for student activities, probably going with partnership with the Parks Department. And then 600,000 for a regional mental health provider for childcare centers. And that would be for four years. So to go through each of those a little bit more, I'll start in reverse order because those are simpler and it gets more complicated. But the 600,000 is kind of estimate for what it would cost to have one regional mental health provider that can go to the childcare centers and train staff. They're not, they wouldn't be providing therapy to children themselves, but would be training staff on trauma, trauma-informed instruction and stuff like that and be coaching them. And so that would be one person for the area. Any questions on that one? 400,000 would be for student activities that would likely be just scholarships for the Parks Department to give out to low-income students so they can participate in it.
Yeah, so on that, I think my, one of my biggest interests in this, this was very specifically to fund at-risk youth sports and not, not give money to parks, but actual sports. So SYSA, you know, could be individualized sports, boxing, wrestling, CrossFit, you know? But getting kids, you know, connected to things that perhaps, especially those that have a very high bar and many don't have access to. Most of these types of specialty sports are pretty high cost. And providing an opportunity for that risk youth to, to connect with those. So I, and I would kind of, my thinking was that it would be done similar to how I think some of the childcare stuff is being done. So each provider, or in this case, you know, the gym owner, the whatever could apply for those dollars. And then part of that would be to respond with how they plan to connect those dollars to at-risk youth and bring them in, recruit them into. Hello? Recruit them into their sport or gym or whatever it might be. So anyway, that, that was a big interest of mine under this, this section. So if we could expand that to have some other opportunities, I think that'd be great.
I would ask if you do that, that it be gender neutral so that you're not favoring boys over girls?
Sure, yeah.
I, I have some interest in that as well, so.
I'm okay with parks, but parks programs can be seasonal. And so if we're partnering with other entities, that would be more of a year-round. That would kind of maybe coincide with the school year. But if it's just in the summer or just in the fall, then there's too big of a time gap. And that would be challenging for continuity, so.
I also wanted to, since we're, I want to go back to the lost one on that. Basically hiring someone to do coaching at childcare centers. I think that was one of the discussions around the childcare one. So it was, to me, it seems like it jumped, jumped over into this one. And I don't, I don't quite see it for this fund as much, just for me.
Yeah, I, I was going to do a relay and then we can have more of a discussion. Because there's still more, I'm sure you're going to have more questions about the others too. And then we can kind of discuss, is this our priorities? Do we want to adjust these levels? That sort of stuff, yeah.
This is a basic question about ARPA funding. I think we agreed it should be used as one-time money. So if we're using it for services, that isn't going to be one-time money. So how do we reconcile that?
That I think would be the part of the, the discussion at the end because that is a good point. If we're aiming towards services is that it will create a cliff, but we can talk about that.
I just think we have to treat everything as a one-time grant and say, we're providing, providing this for a one-time, whatever it is, it's a one-time. And we just have to be very upfront and recognize that and just say, we can't promise that or, or, you know, make any commitments to anything beyond this.
Makes me nervous.
I know.
And I'm in a way on it. To me, it's, you know, the one-time expense is one of our guiding principles. But also it is pandemic relief. I mean, so there, and, and so like, just like we're giving out money to small businesses and nonprofits, that's, it's one time, but we're not doing it again. But it is addressing it. And so given the mental health issues that arose particularly for young people, that, that's how I, that's how I reconcile it. Is that it's, it's, it's more of a one-time intervention to make life better for them. And hopefully with that, even though it might not continue, they will be in a better state to create their own betterment, so.
But we can get back to that. So 300,000 would be for the school-based health clinic with Spokane Schools. As I talked about a match and council member Bingo and I are on the school partnership meeting. We had one initial meeting to just say like, are we on the same page? And then we were going to have a follow-up meeting about kind of what that criteria would look like. But the general guiding principle of that, that we kind of went in with was from our criteria. But it's serve the largest number of low-income kids that have need as possible. Spokane Schools, their board was like, we also need to make sure that the school itself has buy-in, that the staff supports it because otherwise it's not successful. And so Spokane Schools was going to kind of look at their schools to see which would work. Likely a middle or high school, seems like the most likely, probably high school. But they were kind of doing their own evaluation, then we would follow up with them. The idea behind it would be something similar to the Rogers Clinic, the Chaz Clinic at Rogers. It would be partnered with Spokane Public Schools, but then it would have to go to RFP for the provider. And it would be both behavioral health and medical, both would be provided at that facility. So yeah, questions on that.
So legislature funded the one in the elementary school.
I think it was Logan.
It was Logan. So under this model, would we, they, them not be seeking that legislative funding for expansion into other schools?
The legislature is expanding funding into it too. And so there is opportunity there. And I think the more that we can demonstrate that we're interested in this, there would be more opportunity from the legislature to say like, expand and grow. Because there's, under that pilot, there's part for expansion and growth under the grants that the legislature is giving.
Do you, do you know if these clinics would have sort of a, or are going to be publicly accessible? So not just for the students, but.
Yeah, we talked about that too, and it would be.
And the other thing about it is that this, this is, this really is startup one-time. Because once they're established, people can get coverage from their health insurance. And if they're not covered, they can get from Apple Health.
Yep. And so then become self-sustaining. They say typically it's about 600,000 to start. That's for capital improvements that they need. And then they operate at a deficit for the first year or two as they're getting it started. But then it is sustaining after that from Medicaid or whatever.
Yeah. And one of the things I want to make sure was happening is that you don't have to be a Spokane Public Schools member to, to go to these facilities. Because again, I live in the city, but I live in the Meade neighborhood or in the Meade School District. But, you know, Shiloh Hills is the poorest, you know, elementary school in the Meade network. But there, many of them are in the city. So still being able to access these services, even if they're not in the SPS network.
They would. All right. And then the last part is the biggest bucket. That's 1.7 for capital projects. And there's two ways that we could look at it. One is, do we want to give out capital grants to community members that just need that kind of gap funding to get their project finished? Or startup going, probably not like, we're probably looking at the kind of finishing the project. The other is that we could look at a city-owned facility that we would rent out low or for $1. That could be a space for providers, peer support networks, activities, youth centers, stuff can rent out and start up in that space. Something that I think like the Northeast Community Center, the old library that we could rent out kind of that way. Do we want to invest the funds that way or to these community grants as a gap funding? I kind of think we should do both. Do we want to focus all on one project, 1.7 to go heavy on one investment? Or do we want to spread it out? Those are kind of the questions.
So how would that be? So would the school number two could go into number one, back and forth? Because the school clinics is capital investment. So it's kind of like.
Likely from our side, just for ARPA requirements on reporting, we would do the provider side of it. And the school would do the capital improvement side. Just because it gets more complicated when for ARPA reporting, Matt Boston can talk more about it. But if a project has over a million dollars, they have to do a bunch more contracting and it gets complicated. It's new construction too. And that's for if a project is involved. So that's kind of why we were leaning towards us doing the provider side. Yeah.
So if we do use city facilities, I think we should build in a maintenance piece. Because although we're giving it out for a dollar, we're still going to be on the line for maintaining the facility.
So subsidized rent or something like that, that we could.
I, I mean, I guess I'd like to look at what we're doing with other, you know, capital investments. And, you know, like I think about 1590 and the emphasis there is more on the gap funding. And so it might make sense to kind of follow that thread on, on this as well. And just, you know, provide that little missing element that might make a project doable on the capital side. But I would actually propose or advocate that we might reduce that 1.7, maybe like 1.5 or 1.4 and put the remaining in the, the at-risk sports section. Because I just, I don't know that 400 is going to be quite enough, but, so that'd be my suggestion.
So any other questions about those? And then we can have bigger discussion.
Okay. Oh, no, I'm ready for the bigger.
Bigger discussion. Yeah. Okay, bigger discussion.
So bigger, if I was dividing up the pie, I would take the 600,000 and divide it in half. I'd put 300,000 into capital and I'd put 300,000 more into the at-risk youth programming. And on the capital, I really would prefer the gap funding spread around different parts of the city rather than try to choose one and, and, and I don't know, who, the city staff that would plan it. So we've already, I know there are organizations out there that are, they have ideas, they have plans, they're ready to go. And we don't have enough money, even with 2 million, to really hugely move the needle on any of them, even one of them probably. But we could do our part on it. So that's how I see it.
Other thoughts? I, I would actually personally say decreasing both of the services, both the mental health therapist, physician and the activities, just because they will hit a fiscal cliff. So I definitely agree wanting to get low-income kids into more activities and sports and stuff. But that would only serve for three, four years. And then they're likely to want to seek continued scholarships and funding from the city. Do we, are we going to be in a future position to fund future scholarships? Probably not. I get the need right now, but there's also, there's a lot of programming out there. There's always going to be need. I don't know if it's extra need now than, than before.
I only say I, I support that because those programs may be in their infancy. And with three years, they're able to grow and be sustainable, i.e., I don't know, boxing. So maybe it's a startup gym in a low-income neighborhood. And then the support or participation is overwhelming that the organization or another organization comes along to help sustain them. So to say that it may be a cliff, maybe, but we're speculating. On the therapists, the $600,000, we're going to do that for three years?
Before.
Four. So I would say if a therapist has came in and worked with daycare providers for two years and trained their staff and there's a core group, would we need them to do that for four years? Yes, there'll be turnover, but you're hoping the main provider or owner of that center would have staff that could then train other people as they come on board.
I think what we hear from them is that they want this like permanently, that they don't want it just a short period of time. But I understand that too.
But then that would be a cliff because we can't only fund it for four years. And they would have to somehow incorporate that into their own budget or advocate the legislature.
Right.
So for, for me, I mean, I, I really think that the, the at-risk youth sports stuff is probably the most important aspect of this because I think about, you know, just a lot of the stuff going on in our community right now with drugs and violence. We have a lot of young people who are involved. We've been talking obviously a lot about drug interventions, things of that nature. And I think that that is literally what this is. You know, this is an intervention that gets kids off the streets and puts them in a very positive, safe situation. Yeah, it might be a short-term deal because obviously we don't have a whole lot of money sitting around to continue this sort of program. But I think there might be an opportunity, whether it's the legislature to consider something or more likely nonprofits and other local philanthropic, yeah, organizations might step up and fill that gap. Because they might see what, what is doable with a, a program like this. And so I, to me, I think that's, that's one of the more important aspects of, of what we're trying to accomplish here.
And I think that could actually be done if we owned a city facility and gave out space to somewhere like a boxing or youth clinic that's running out there. That's more focused on cultural, relevant peer-to-peer. Was that what you were going to say?
Well, but then that's just one, that's just like one sport. There's a whole.
But it could be multiple. Right. I mean.
You know, and, and a boxing gym doesn't necessarily lend itself to, you know, other uses per se. I mean, the, just how they operate and run or just, you know, everything is so different. So anyway.
Lauren?
Boxing gym could be great for a dance studio, just saying. I would like a definition of what sports you're talking about because I'm guessing that ice skating isn't in there.
I would include that.
I'm guessing ballroom dancing's not in there.
Hadn't considered that, but.
I would be concerned about the one-city facility because then it's not neighborhood-based. And then we got transportation issues.
Or we could do multiple.
Multiple, but that's not a lot to spread around for multiple locations, but.
It's kind of a strategy.
It's kind of a strategy.
Decision.
However that works out, my emphasis would be neighborhood because that will be a challenge.
Well, I'm, I'm just going to jump in real quick. I would say if we had a facility that we can rent out low and subsidize, that would actually be ongoing for these startup sports centers rather than these one-time scholarships that they would see a cliff.
Can I go first? Because I have to.
Yes.
Take off to another meeting. I just want to say I'm, I'm still leaning in on the active, maybe we shouldn't call them sports. We should call them activities.
Sure.
But the one thing, and this is a little bit different than Councilmember Cathcart, but is we could pitch it towards scholarship organization and programs. So we'd say, hey, if you want to start a program or you have one and you want to expand it, we will support it, much like we're doing the cultural events. So we're, we're funding the cultural events for three years under the theory that after three years, they'll be sustaining on those scholarships. So that's a little, it's a little narrower than what Councilmember Cathcart was doing. But that's just a thought.
And when it comes to facilities for sports, most of these sports can meet at a park. Or activities, whatever it is. They can, they have basketball courts that you can do ballroom dancing on, right? I mean, they have fields for all the, all the field sports and they've got all kinds of courts. So I think that we can lean into the parks a little bit, not, we're not giving the money to the parks. But a lot of these activities can take place at parks.
Or could we build those, an indoor space at a park, like say Shadle or something where then they can access the park there too? And then they can do indoor, outdoor and, and office space and stuff like that.
So I, I would just simply, as an option, request that in the RFP, we would include an opportunity for, you know, those folks who run sports organizations, youth activities organizations, gyms, et cetera, that they could respond with, you know, what, what they essentially would, it would cost per, per child, what their plan would be to, to connect with at-risk youth or what their previous programs have been around at-risk youth. I can think of a couple off the top of my head. And, and then, you know, what the, what the, you know, total cost would be. And then we can obviously, as we're. the, what the, you know, total cost would be. And then we can obviously, as we're looking through all the different applicants, you know, you can look and see, well, this is a lot less expensive than this. And this is going to use a park and this is a gym. And this is less, let's just create options that, that we can, you know, potentially fund based on the responses. And who knows? I mean, we might get one response, we might get 100. I mean, it's just until we put it out there, we just don't know.
So one of our best ARPA conversations and study session. It's good. So you have food for thought for your group?
I sure do.
Okay. And you can come back to us. All right. So we're adjourned. We meet again next Monday.
You sure do have food for thought.